So, Ankhim Ma'at, we are back again, another week for study session. We are picking up where we left off last week, so we are still reading, I don't know why. The bookmark is coming out at the bottom, but Egyptian Magic by E.A. Wallace, Budge. So, we're picking up on page four, and I'm gonna do my best to not just talk the whole time. So, I don't know why this looks so dark, I swear, I don't, I don't know what that is all about. Oh well, we're here to study anyways. Alright, so, ch-ch-ch, so last week, we were pretty much just reading the preface, we started, he, uh, Budge was talking about the Christians and like how they were influenced. Um, oh, why can't I push wave? Hello, Ankhim Ma'at. Um, so we're, it's essentially just talking about like how they are superstitious and so on and so forth, so. So at the bottom, "From the Hebrews we receive incidentally, it is true considerable information about the powers of comedic magic. Saint Stephen boasts that the great legislator Moses", I'm like, oh, we already, we starting out strong today, "was learned in all the wisdom of the Egyptians, and declares that he was mighty in words and deeds", and he's quoting the Bible there, "and there are numerous features in the life of the, this remarkable man, which shew that he was acquainted with many of the practices of comedic magic", Ankhim Ma'at Ma'akara, in Nebet Matar. Using your whole name. Alright, so the phrase mighty in words probably means that like the Nettert Osset, "he was strong of tongue and uttered the words of power which he knew with correct pronunciation", ooh, again, we know that's important. "So, um, and halted not in his speech and was perfect both in giving the command and in saying the word", I'mma wait and see where he goes with this. "The turning of a serpent into what, what is apparently, uh, what is apparently an inanimate wooden stick, and the turning of a stick back into a writhing snake are feats which have been performed in the east from the most ancient period, and the powers of control and direct the movements of such venomous reptiles was one of the things of which the Kemetu was most proud, and in which he was most skillful already in the time when the pyramids or the mercots were being built. But this was by no means the only proof which Moses", I'm like, I'm struggling with reading this only because I'm like, why? Why? I want to see where he's going with this point he's making here. Um, but we will see. Uh, with such venomous snakes, da-da-da-da, but this was a no means the only proof which Moses gave that he was versed in the magic of the Kemetu, for like the sage, Abaner, the king. I hate it when they like split names on a page, cuz you gotta go back and forth to get it all at once. Nec, it looks like Nec Tavis, and that sounds very Greek. "And all other magicians of Kemet from time immortal, he and Aaron possessed a wonderful rod". I'm trying to go down to the notes, cuz he has a note next to rod, but it's interesting that he numbers it eight, yet the page only goes to three. Hmm, okay, thank you, Budge. "At the word of Moses, Aaron lifted up his rod and smote the waters, and they became blood. He stretched it over the waters and frogs innumerable appeared. When the dust was smitten by the rod, it became lice, uh, and so on. Moses sprinkled ashes, quote, "towards heaven, and it became boils and blains upon men and beasts. He stretched out his rod, and there was a hail of fire mingled with the hail very grievous, and the flax and barley was smitten. He stretched out his rod, and the locust came, and after the darkness", and after them, the darkness. So he's pretty much just retelling this whole biblical story, so respectfully, I'mma skip some of that, cuz he's just kinda, he just kinda keep going, going through the story, so skipping maybe about like four or five lines. Uh... "It is quite certain that every Egyptian magician believed that he could perform these things equally marvelous by merely uttering the name of one of the Netru, and through the words of the power he had learned to recite, and there are many instances in record of Egyptian magicians utterly destroying their enemies by the recitation of a few words processed of, um, possessed of magical powers, and by the performance of some apparently simple ceremony. For details, see chapter three", he says. It's like, how you gonna say that? He's like, let me give you a taste, just a taste. "But the great distinction must be made between the great magic of Moses", ooh, there goes that bias right there, "and that of the Egyptians among whom he lived. The former was wrought by the command of God of the Hebrews, and by the latter, the God of Egypt and the command of man." I still am trying to wait and see where he's going with this, so he's making this whole comparison. Yeah, now he's going way all back and he's talking about how he parted the sea. So I'm on page seven, so towards the bottom. "Egyptian magic long before time of Moses, as we see, as we may see from an interesting story preserved in the Westker Paparus", see, ooh, Lord, and then he gonna go ahead and cite German. So he's citing a German text with that one. Um... This document was written in the early part of the, and then he gone, this man is just not letting me be great today. First, the internet don't want me to be great, messing me up, then he's giving me all kind of German pronunciations, and now he wants me to count in Roman numerals. So ten, five, six, seven, so the Eighteenth Dynasty about BCE, cuz I'm adding that in there. Uh, fifteen fifty, but it's clear that the story is in the date from the early empire, and are in fact as old as the Great Pyramid. The story related to King Kohufu, or Chops, they say, uh, by Ba'u'fra, "as an event which happened in the time of the king's father and is proof of wonderful powers of magic, which were possessed by the priest called", ooh, we name dropping out here. Te, uh, see, I had it in my mind, and then I went to say it out loud. Tchach, tchacha, Ankh. It's interesting, throwing all them A's up in there, okay. "It seems that on a certain day, King Senefu was in low spirits, and he applied to the nobles of his royal household expecting that they would find some means whereby his heart might be made glad. But as they could do nothing to cheer up the king, he gave orders that the priest and writer of books should be brought into his presence immediately." This reminds me of that other story where, where they were like, "Go bring me midgets to entertain me", like, no! Like the ancestors was just as politically incorrect as we are now. Bring him to entertain me, tell me stories. Alright, "When he arrived, the king or the Nusut said to him, 'My brother, I turn to the nobles of my royal household, seeking for some means whereby I might cheer my heart, and they have found nothing for me. Then the priests made answer and advise the king to betake himself to the lake near the palace, and go on for a sail on the boat, which had been comfortably furnished with the things of the royal house.'" Ooh, this story sounds so familiar, I feel like I read this, did I read this? And it's talking about the pearl and, and the woman who lost the... Yeah, so he, so this dude tells the king, "You know what you need? You know what you need, sir? You need to go take a boat ride and have all these fine women row you around outside. And, you know, have, they, they all dressed, they looking cute, and he's sitting there all pleased cuz he, you know, he's looking at some fine ladies." I'm like, that is, hmm. I'm like, this is not the same, but it's like almost the same, it's like when guys are not feeling right, they're like, "Let's go to the strip club, I know that's gonna make you feel better", like, really? Oh, okay, so yes, yeah, again, only this time they were mostly clothed. "But anyway, in her hair and ornaments which was made of nude turquoise, she had jewelry, it fell in the water, and he basically was losing his mind trying to find this beautiful girl's jewelry." So essentially, Budge is telling us that this king was a simp, that's what it sounds like to me, I'm just saying. So the king promised he would get back this jewelry, and the king basically called back the priest and was just like, "Yo, you gotta find this", like, he most likely was trying to get in her pants, I'm, I mean, just a wild guess. So... Oh, so essentially, he already did it because he already knew, AKA, he knew the king was probably simping, and went and had something made. Sun has roll, blah-ba-dy, blah-ba-dy, blah, yakety, smackety. Okay, so here, now, let's skip down to the good part, cuz all, it's basically just them going back and forth about, "Are you gonna get the jewelry?", "Yeah, I'll get the jewelry", "What happened to the jewelry?", "It's in the water", "You gonna go get it in the water?", "Yeah, I'mma make it happen", like, it's just a whole bunch of back and forth. So, um, he gonna tell her, he gonna get it back for her, and that's the other thing, like, so the woman is like, "I'm in the presence of the king, but F the king, I'm not gonna do my job cuz I dropped my jewelry", I'm like, I mean, don't get me wrong, I would be upset, but if the king is there, I ain't trying to get beheaded, but maybe I'm just a little, maybe that's just not how folks think, I don't know, maybe I'm a weirdo. So anyway, um, he, uh, the priest uttered these magical words, the water in the lake became pretty much like opened up, he went down and he got the gift, I mean, he, he got the piece of jewelry, and essentially, the king made a feast in his royal household because I guess now he was entertained, like, that's all you need? Like, you just need beautiful women and dudes to do magic, and like, you'll feel better. Could you? I'm clearly oversimplifying, but I'm, I'm just getting a kick out of this story, but, okay. "So such is a story of power possessed by magician for the time of the king who reigned at the beginning of the fourth dynasty about thirty-eight hundred BCE. The copy of the story which possessed is older than the period of Moses", eh, oh, so that, that was the connection he was trying to make, basically saying that this Moses story really happened earlier in Kemet before that. "Among the Greeks and Romans considerable respect was entertained, but not only for the wisdom. Greeks went, um, over to Kemet and brought their own, brought the information back to their own country, misunderstood many things, I'm not gonna lie, I'm kinda like trying to fast forward a little bit cuz I'm like, but I wanna enter the next chapter, cuz the next chapter looks really juicy, but I'm like, well, I don't want it to pride folks of all these minute details that everybody wants to know. Uh, white magic, black are, striking instances, yada, 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 yada. Oh, found something juicy and fun. Okay, so, Budge is giving another instance of like the power that the ancient Kemetu had. So he said, "When the classical writers were well informed, they only ascribed magical knowledge to, um, the Egyptian magicians themselves that they claimed to possess." So, you know how sometimes, um, you'll do something dope, but then people play telephone, and then the story ends up changing? So, um, he's making the distinction that these are stories that people say that they did themselves rather than like secondhand. So a striking instance is given in the second book of the metamorph- metamorphosos, not memorphisis, metamorphosos of Apuleius? Hate when they change the names, but anyway, that's alright, cuz I be acting like these pronunciations are easier if they're, if they're ironic Kemet, like, they ain't no easier to pronounce. I still gotta work on that, my, my pronunciations of things. So anyway, "It will be remembered, the following is narrated. The student Telephon arrived on the day of Larissa, and as he was wandering about in almost penniless condition, he saw an old man standing on a large block of stone, issuing a proclamation to the effect that anyone who would undertake to guard the dead", but I swore I read this, am I bugging? I'm telling you, I know I read this. Cuz he guards the dead body, and he did it because he said magical words, and the woman came in and gave him Boku bucks. That's, that's it, that's what happens. See, look, four pages later, and it's still talking about, well, it's towards the end where they're actually examining the body, where, because essentially, um, back then, when, you know, before it came time to kinda go through the whole process of preserving and, 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 cuz it took forty days to prepare a body before they would actually bury you. So they would be hiring folks back then, um, because there could be body snatchers, they were thought that evil spirits could go into the bodies and stuff like that. So, um, they would hire people to basically sit and watch all night, just watch them. Make sure no spirits come in, make sure no animals come in, and pretty much, um, an animal had come in, he kicked it out, and then it says in the story that he actually fell asleep, which is kinda like... I'm not gonna lie, if this was a story that's based on something that really happened, I'm not going to put that part in the story, like, I'm not gonna be like, oh yeah, and then I fell asleep too, but I got my money! Like, I'mma leave that detail out. So, anyhow. So that's the end of that story. "The end of the story does not concern us", thank you, Budge, "and so we pass on the note that acting, the act of touching the mouth, AKA, that's like one of the things he did to make sure that no evil spirits came into the body, um, which he performed is of course part of the ceremony of the opening of the mouth, which is why I was saying like it takes forty days, um, before you can do that whole ceremony and you prepare the body and all that other stuff. Excuse me, "which is often referred to the religious texts, and was considered extreme importance for the welfare of the dead and the powers bringing the back the dead to life. He ascribed the priest a magician, the son who reigned called himself something else, famous learn..." Oh! Oh, this is interesting. So essentially, he's, he's going on to say, um, that the person who wrote down that story, "in connection to the discovery of certain chapters of the Perchem Heru", I like moved up and now I gotta move back down, "was presumably the powers of the magic possessed by the ancient. In, in, in answer to some remark that was made to him, "up to the present thou hast only heard reports concerning the things which the men of olden time knew, and man knoweth not whether they are true or not. But now I will call thy majesty to see the sage in thine own time, and one who knoweth thee not." In reply, he's, or Kohufu questions, "Who's this man? Who this, who this is? Who this woman harpo? I'm done, anyway, um, "So it is certain the man is called Teta, who dwelleth in Tet-Seneferu, and is one hundred and ten years old, and to this day he eateth five hundred loaves of bread", oh, he fat? I'm really, let me finish this, finish this sentence, man, yet. Alright, uh, "He, he is one hundred and ten years old, and to this very day he eateth five hundred loaves of bread, and the shoulder of an ox, and he drinketh one hundred measures of ale", so he's fat and he's a boozer, is what I'm getting here, I'm being sarcastic, cuz, you know, they ate a lot. I don't know what, I don't know anybody, any old person, if you ever ate with an old person, you know darn well they eating a quarter of that plate, and they gonna save it for lunch tomorrow. So, that's how I already know, uh-uh, but it's okay, cuz it's mythos. So it's, it's based on, on stuff, but it's to teach the lesson and, and get across morals and values and so on and so forth, so I get it. "He knoweth how to fasten on again to its body by the head that hath been cut off. He knoweth how to make a lion follow him whilst he snare is trailing on the ground, and he knoweth the number of apetets of the sanctuary of Jehuti. Now Kohufu had for a long time passed sought out the apetet of the sanctuary of Jehuti because he was anxious to make one similar of his own horizon. Thought, I'm sorry, though at the present it was impossible to say where apetet was. It is quite clear that it was an object or an instrument used in connection with the working of magic of some sort, and it is clear that the king is much interested in the pursuit, um, as his subjects are. In reply to his sons where Kohufu told him to go and bring the sage into his presence, and the royal barge or boat having been brought, he set out for the place where the sage lived. Having sailed upon the river for some time, he and his party arrived to Tet-Seneferu, and when the boats had been tied to the quay, the prince set out to perform the rest of the journey, which was over land in a sort of litter made of ebony, which was borne by men and means of poles of sesnechem wood", I don't know why he italicized that. Okay, "inlaid with gold. When he had arrived in the abode of Teta, the litter was set down upon the ground, and the prince came out to greet the sage, for whom he found lying upon a basket-work bed or mattress, which had been placed before him in the courtyard of his house, while one servant shampooed his head and the other rubbed his feet." So, this man is living the life, I wanna be a hundred-year-old man, eating mad carbs, drinking mad booze, having people do my hair and rub my feet, and all I gotta do is sit there and be smart? That sounds amazing, sign me up, no, let me not. Then I'mma be complaining like, "I need to go to the gym!" Oh, I amuse me. "Okay, after a suitable greeting in reference to the sage's honorable, uh, condition, he had made, um, the son told him that he had come from a great distance in order to bring him a message from Kohufu, his father, and the sage bade him welcome heartily, and prophesied that Kohufu would greatly exalt his rank", hmm, okay. "The greeting ended, and he assisted Teta to rise, and the old man said", now how was he, now in my mind, he's not like some little skinny old man, he's like this big old dude, but that's okay. That's just my imagin- my imagination, I'm done. Um, "So he assisted him to rise, and the old man set out for quay leaning upon the arm of the king's son. And when he had arrived there, he had asked that a boat might be provided to transport for the transport of his children and his books. Now, you know the first thing I'm asking, at a hundred and ten years old, and the parent, and drinking and doing all this stuff, how many kids he got? It could just be two, and I'm bugging, but, that's the first thing I'm thinking, like, wait, 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 hold on here. This, this old guy is already a G, so he might have like five hundred kids coming with him at a hundred and ten years old. But anyway, I digress. "Two boats were at once prepared and filled with their complement of sailors, and Teta sailed down to", I'm sorry, he sailed down the happy, uh, with the son, and his family followed behind in another boat. "After a time, the party arrived at the palace, and he went into the presence of the king", oh no, "the son went to the presence of his father, reported to him that he had brought Teta the sage, um, to see him. Kohufu gave orders that he was to be brought before him quickly, and having gone forth into the colonnade at the place, Teta was led in to see him. Kohufu said to him, 'How is it, Teta and I have never, I have never seen thee?', and the sage replied, 'Oh, prince, he who is called cometh, and since thou hast called me, behold, here I am. You ask and you shall receive.' I'm like, oh wait, I'm like not saying hi to anybody, Ankhim Ma'at, y'all, I'm sorry. Um... See, look, I'm busy making jokes and saying hello, I lost my place, how dare I? "Kohufu said to him, 'It is true according to what is reported that thou knowest how to fasten on again to its body the head, which hath been cut off', and the sage replied, 'Yes, verily, my lord. Um, prince, I do not know how to do this thing.' I'm sorry, he didn't say, "I do know how to do this thing", look, I'm switching up Teta's words, Teta yelling at me, from the field of reeds, like, read it right! So he says, "Yes, I do know how to do this", and Kohufu said, "Let a captive who is shut up in prison be brought", oh, damn! I already see where this is going, y'all probably saw where that was going to. "So, 'He brought and said to me that I may inflict his doom upon him.' Yo, I wanna say that, I'mma inflict my doom on you. That sounds really weird though, when I say it, maybe I shouldn't say that to people. Alright, um, "But Teta made answer, 'Nay, my lord, the king, let not this thing be performed upon man, but upon some creature that belongeth to the sacred animals. Then someone brought him a goose, and having cut off its head, he laid the body of the goose on the west side of the colonnade and the head on the east side. Teta then stood up and spake certain words of magical power, where upon the body began to move, and the head likewise. And each time that they moved, the one came nearer to the other, until at, at length the head moved into its right place on the bird, which straight away cackled. After this, Teta had a keta bird", which I'm like, clearly that's gonna be a Googleable bird, I don't know what bird that is. "And brought it to him, and upon it he performed the same miracle, which he had brought upon the goose, and provided that he had similar power over the animal creation, and ox was brought to him, and having cut off its head, which fell upon the ground, he uttered the words of magical power, and the ox stood up and lived before", uh, lived as before. Now I wanna know, what was Teta doing? Like, was he just cutting up, like, was he a butcher? How did he know? Anyway, I'm, I'm being like, I'm being kinda silly, but let me be serious though, um... Hmm, that's interesting, let me, let me be serious for real though. "The two stories from the Westker, Westkar Paparus, given the above, are sufficient to prove that already in the Fourth Dynasty, the working of magic was a recognized art among the Kemetu, and everything we learned from later texts indicates that it is well nigh impossible to imagine a time in Kemet when such was not the case. But the quote, 'Wisdom of the Kemetu was of two kinds', that is to say, they were possessed of two kinds of wisdom, which enabled them to deal with both the material world and the spiritual world. The nations around, however, confuse the two kinds and misunderstand matters in consequence. One of the oldest name, ah, ha-ha, one of the oldest names of Egypt is Kemet, but he puts K-A-M-T, so Kemet, or Q-E-M-T, Kemet, a word which means black or dusky, and it was applied to the country on account of the dark color of the mud which forms the land on each side of the Nile." This is so funny, I literally read a post this morning, and they were saying, they were listing all the different names of Kemet, so I'm just like, oh, that's kinda like, okay. Getting back to it, "So the Christian Egyptians, or Cots, transmitted the words under the form of kem to the Greeks, Romans, Syrians, and Arabs, in very early period of... Oh, I'm sorry, "At a very early period, the Egyptians were famous for their skill in working of metals, and their attempts to transmute them, and according to Greek writers, they employed quicksilver in the process whereby they separated the metals, gold and silver, from the native ore. From these process, from these processes, there resulted a quote, 'black powder' or substance which was supposed to possess the most marvelous powers, and to contain it in the individualities of the various metals, and in it, the actual substance was incorporated. In a mythical manner, this quote, 'black powder', was identified with the body of the Netter Asar, and was known to possess, oh, that he was known to possess in the underworld, and both were attributed to magical qualities, and both were thought to be the source of light and power", that's kinda dope, cuz the first thing... Cause the first thing like when you um see pictures of Asar, he's usually green. And you know, re- regeneration and all that other stuff, vegetation. And then what I have been told previously, um, cause you, I don't wanna say I'm nosy, but I like to know stuff and sometimes I wanna know just cause I wanna know. And other times I wanna know because I actually wanna understand. And sometimes it's a little bit of both. So anytime I've ever heard about why Asar has black skin, it had to do with the idea that like he had already passed on. The decomposing bodies, like they would turn black after, you know, they kinda went through their their process and so on and so forth. But it's interesting that this is saying that it has to do with this metallurgy and the power that this black powder had and associating that with Asar's power. And I even take it a step further because if you think about it, well, and I'm like I I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna kinda feel like a OG if he ends up saying the same thing. But I think it's dope that this black powder and it separates the gold from the ore. And Asar, he's supposed to um judge us and rule over, you know, once we pass away and all that other stuff. So it's this idea of that separation from the body, the separation from the earthly stuff, but then also judge, you know, because you have to judge like, oh, that's the gold. I wanna keep that side. I don't want the ore. Like that needs to be thrown away and not like given to Ahmet. So it's just like I wonder, or am I just going too far? Am I thinking too hard? But I don't know. That's my brain. That's my brain. Just going. So we'll see what he says. Thus, side by side with the growth of skill in performing the ordinary process of metalworking in Kemet. There grew up in that country, the belief that magical powers existed in fluxes and alloys. That's so dope. That is so cool. I don't know why I'm like so excited about that, but I think it's just the, the fact that I, I'm, I'm like, I'm still trying to get my thoughts specifically together, but it's this idea that when it comes to us growing and learning things. There it, you know, it has that flux, it goes and it comes and you go through this whole process. But then there are also alloys and other pieces. And the art of manipulating the metals and the knowledge of the chemistry of the metals. And of their magical powers were described by the name Kamea, that is to say, the preparation of the black ore or powder. Which was regarded as the active principle in the transmutation of metals. To this name, the Arabs affixed the article A L and thus we obtained the word Al Kamea. Or Al Alchemy. Oh, I don't know how I didn't see that one coming. Um, what is gunpowder? Honestly, I really don't know the, the compound of gunpowder. Maybe it has something to do with that, but I, I'm honestly not, I don't know much about like powders and the chemicals and all that other stuff. I'm still kinda like, oh, alchemy. Ah, anyways, good anime. Side note, if you watch anime. Fullmetal Alchemist, not Brotherhood, Brotherhood sucks, the original one. Good times. Alright, back to comedic stuff. Alright, so alchemy which was, which will perpetuate the reputation of the Egyptians was successful students of both white and black arts. But in addition to their skill as handicraftsman and artisans, the Egyptian, the commit you were skilled in literary compositions and in the production of books. Especially that class which related to the ceremonies which were performed for the benefit of the deceased. We have unfortunately no means of knowing what early contemporary people thought of the funeral ceremonies. But it seems to be certain that it was chiefly by means of those that they obtained their reputation as workers of miracles. If by chance any member of a desert tribe had been permitted to behold the ceremonies which were performed when the kings for whom the pyramids have been built were laid to rest in them, the stories that they took back to their kingsmen. Kinsmen, sorry, would have been received as sure proofs that the commit you had power to give life to the dead, to animate statues and to command the service of their Neturu by the mere utterance of their names as words of power. The columns of of Merunetor with which the walls of the tombs were often covered and the figures of the Neturu painted or sculpted upon the stelle or sarcophagi uh would still further impress the barbarian folk who always regarded the written letter and those who understand it with great awe. I think it's interesting who he's calling a barbarian now. Okay. The following story from blah, blah, blah in the views of the Arabs. So essentially it's talking about how um they were fighting with the Pharaoh. Um, and the, the army, I'll just read it instead of summarize it. It seems that when the army of the Nusud had been drowned in the Red Sea, the women and the slaves feared lest that they should be attacked by the king of Syria in the West. This is what happens when I look up. I lose my place. In this difficulty, they elected a woman called So it says D A L U K A H, so I'm thinking DeLuca. And I, I work with somebody and that's their name and they're super Italian, so I'm just like, how do I make, how do I like say that with an Arab pronunciation? All I could think is like the Italian way of saying it. That's too funny to me. As their queen, because she was wise and prudent and skilled in magic. DeLuca's first act was to surround all Egypt with a wall. Oh, she sound like Trump. I couldn't, I couldn't hold that one in, sorry. I tried. So, um, was she guarded by men who were stationed along it at short intervals? Her object being was to protect her son who was addicted to the chase from the attack of wild beasts as Egypt from invasion by nomad tribes. Besides this, she placed around the enclosure figures of crocodiles and other formidable animals. During the course of her reign of thirty years, she filled Kemet with her temples and figures of animals. So she made figures of men in the form of dwellers in the countries around uh Kemet and Syria and the West and of the beasts in which they rode. In the temple, she collected all the secrets of nature and all the attracting or repelling powers which were contained in minerals, plants and animals. Oh, boom. I'm sorry, that I'm like, that's a totally like other thing, but um, so when people say you know what? No, let me finish reading before I even give into that thought, cause maybe not. She performed her sorceries at the moment in the revolution of celestial bodies when they would be amenable to a higher power. And then it came to pass that if any army set out from any part of Arabia or Syria to attack Kemet. The queen made the figures of the soldiers and the animals on which they were riding to disappear beneath the ground. And the same fate immediately overtook the living creatures which they represented. Wherever they might be in their journey and the destruction of the figures on scalpatures entrails the destruction of the hostile host. In brief, the large figures of the gods which were sculpted or painted on the walls and the hieroglyphic I'm just gonna go ahead. Hieroglyphic inscriptions which accompanied them were considered by those who could neither understand nor read them to be nothing more, nothing less than magical figures and formulae which were intended to serve as talismans. Okay, so my thought is still the same that it was a couple of seconds ago. So for me one, the idea that I'm like, now I'm, I'm, I'm come back to that specific part. But the idea that people, um question if the commit to you used crystals and things like that. And it's just like, it says right here, she can, she used minerals, plants and animals as a means to protect and repel the powers and if, you know, just kinda shield around, um the borders and things like that. And it's just like this sound like a powerful lady. I wanna look more about, more up about her. I'm like, who, who this lady? I need to know. Uh but the thing that I was initially thinking about is that today, and this is just my observation, feel free to jump in. But it seems like when it comes to contemporary commit to you. The men are on one wave and the women are on another wave. And they rarely kind of are in, in sync with each other. I'll put it like that. And it's not to say that they're not necessarily on the same page, but it's kinda like women be in this chapter and men are over there in that chapter. Actually, the men are busy arguing about the spaces and the periods and, and a K versus an H and all they, they just be arguing about all kinda stuff. And but then on the same time, women be on the wave of like worshiping vaginas. I, I don't, I mean, I'm just, it is what it is. It's like, oh, you have a vagina, we shall worship you. It's just like, oh, that's really response from colonialism and patriarchy and oh my, that's interesting that we have these things, but it's just, it's interesting that it's saying that the woman kinda went and knew all of these different methods and I'm, I look forward to seeing if they're going to have a story of a man doing something similar. I'm just saying everything and then on top of that, y'all are using Sanskrit words, like I, I just can't, but you know, whatever. Who am I? What do I know? So anyway. The historian, blabberdy, 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 blah, cause we almost done. Cause chapter two is all about magical stones and amulets. Like that's the part I really wanna like get to. I'm not gonna lie, I'm like rushing. Nefratum, don't do that. He really came and is like messing with the tripod and if y'all, you know, see the floor, it was the cat, the cat did it. See what I said? See what happens when you give your words power? The cat follows. Alright, anyway. Um, so the historian Masudi. I'm gonna say I said that all the way correctly. Sir, I, I need you to now do that. That's, that's, that's what needs to happen. I, I need you to stop. He's like, just love me. And he's staring, okay. Avoid the cute eyes. So the instance of the powers of the working of magic possessed by a certain Jew which provides that the magical practice of the commit you had passed eastward and had found a congenial home amongst the Jews who lived in about and about Babylonia. Uh, or Babylon, sorry. Hello. This man was native to the village of Zahara. I'm gonna say it in the most Yankee voice that I can, Zahara. In the district of Kufa. Yankee again. And he employed his time working magic in the okay, so they was just talking about Jews, but now they talking about a mosque. Okay. He transformed himself into a camel and walked on a rope and made the phantom of an ass to pass through his body. It's not saying why he's doing this though. Finally having a slain man, he cut off the head and removed it from the trunk and passing. Oh, okay. So he's basically saying how like other groups tried to recreate and redo, um what the commit to you was doing. I get it now, cause I was like, why would you turn yourself into a camel? See, look, now he won't knock other stuff on the floor. Get a cat, they said. It'll be fun, they said. Nobody said that. I'm lying. Alright, so we now have to describe briefly the principal means upon which the commit to you relied for working magic. That is to say magical stones or amulets, magical figures, magical pictures and formula. Magical names, magical ceremonies, et cetera. And such portions of the book of the Perdem Haru is bear upon these subjects greatly. Yo, he's really intent, like he just doing the most right now. And I'm trying to ignore him. So anyway, chapter two, how we doing on time? Let me, let me check real quick. Of course I get a text message from my supervisor at this moment when I'm trying to look at the time. Come on now. Six fifty, we got ten minutes. We gonna read about some amulets and stones. Okay, amulet is a name given to the class of objects and ornaments and articles of dress. And wearing apparel made of various substances which were employed by the commit to you and later by other nations to protect the human body, either living or dead from belful influences and from the attacks of visible and invisible foes. The word amulet is derived from an Arabic root meaning to bear carry. I'm sorry, to bear or to carry, hence amulet. I'm telling you, he just if, if y'all see the floor. It's his fault. And the name is broadly applied to any kind of talisman or ornament to which supernatural powers are described. It is not clear whether the amulet was intended first of all to protect the living or the dead body. But it seems that it was originally worn to guard its owner from savage animals and from serpents. Okay, that makes sense. As time went on, the development of religious ideas and beliefs progressed and as a result, new ambulance representing new views were invented. The objects which were able to protect the living were made by an easy transition in the minds of those who wore them to protect the dead. Moreover, the preservation of the corruptible body with the number of its members complete and intact was the most vital was of the most vital importance for the life of the spiritual and incorruptible body. Which was believed to spring therefore, therefrom. Under the influence of new beliefs, the dead body became a Yeah, alright, I see, look, second guessing myself. Vertible storehouse of amulets. Back it up, hold on. I wanna make sure I'm right, I'm doing that right. Hold on. So I'm not gonna lie, this is totally Minyet's thought and I don't know, feel free to correct me. But had these amulets were vital, which was believed to spring from the incorruptible body under the influence of the beliefs, the dead body became a vertebral storehouse of amulets. And the first thing I'm thinking about is tattoos. And I'm like a lover of tattoos. So if I'm, I don't know, would tattoos count as an amulet? I mean technically it's ink under the skin, but and it's so funny, I literally just told my students, um, I'm like, oh Lord. I just told my students today, cause they were like, ah, you tatted? And I'm like it's hot. So yeah, but um, and they haven't seen me at all this year, so like that's why. But anyway, all of that is to say, they're like, oh, how many tattoos do you have? Oh, well, why? What's for? Blah, 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 blah. And um, I tell this story and I know, um I know my Akra already knows this story because it grinds my gears when people be like, oh my God, you got so many tattoos. You must just love pain. And I'm like if that ain't the shallowest piece of crap you could say to me, like, don't say that to me. Please don't ever, if we ever speak in person, please don't ever say that to me, cause it's, it's gonna grind my gears. please don't ever if we ever speak in person please don't ever say that to me cuz it's it's gonna grind my gears unless you really trying to purposely grind my gears in which case I might just stop talking give you some deadpan face until you just stop being dumb that's usually how I rock so be prepared to get the death stare and me roll my eyes and potentially just walk away from you cuz you sound crazy and I'm clearly telling you right now don't say that to me so anyway regular happy place so the whole purpose of me saying that is that each of my tattoos so the first one that I got was of my aunt and I got that um back in two thousand nine and um long story short almost died um had to have emergency surgery and doctors literally told me like um if you leave you gotta sign this paper cuz if you die it's not our fault and um it was super traumatic like that was just like definitely a life-changing experience so um went through all of that and I had already wanted a tattoo but I was like oh well I want something that's gonna mean something and blah 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 so I got my aunt on my back and the idea was if I could go through that if I could experience the pain of surgery and everything else then I can look a little needle for a couple of hours I'll be good I'm fine and then it kinda rolled from there so I have my aunt I have my reading I had a visual um made of my reading so I have that I have my name reading uh Netter and my name on my calf I have um Sekmet Baste and Het Haru um trying to think what else do I have I ha- and it's again it's all reasons and so on and so forth but I have um Haru and Satash and then I have Kepper and then Amitum Ponateer on my forearm and all of these things are religious in nature and the idea is that and this is the part that my Akara always be making fun of me she's like oh hmm I said I feel it's as though I'm a walking meditation it doesn't matter what I'm doing where I'm going it's a constant reminder of what it is I'm supposed to be doing the person whom I I say I want to be wish to be and and growing into so when the kids ask me today and they're just like oh well what does it mean and like you know how you just have people be like wow that's so deep and I'm like oh you little teenagers I love y'all but anyway I'm saying all of these stories because or I'm I'm saying all of this to say can tattoos be an amulet because if so like a storehouse your skin being the storehouse of protection for yourself the protection during your life as well as after you pass away like I I just that's really what I got out of that that's what it made me think of each member was placed under specific protection of some amulet and a number of objects which were believed to protect the body generally from serpent's worm mildew decay um putrification were laid with a lavish hand in and upon and about it and between the bandages for which they were swathed so yeah once you were going through your forty days and they you know put all that salt on you and yada 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 then they would put these different amulets on you as they wrapped you up and put resin on you and all that other stuff yes air high five woo get the sleeve cuz I um I need a little more coins to get ready but um I'm doing the other side of my forearm next and then I'm deciding if I wanna move down to my hands or not um but you know how people usually get like uh what is it mandala mandala I don't know how to say it but they get like that um Indian motif on their hand so I've seen there are these tattoos on priestesses uh or Hemet of um I guess they're or they well I don't know what class of priestesses they were so I can't even say if they're wabs or not or wabetz or not but um the priestesses of Het Haru had certain tattoos placed on their body now eventually and I mean it's not as detailed as like a uh Japanese you know how the Yakuza get like the whole body except for like right here and um you know so that they can look professional but um the it's consistent of like a bunch of different dashes so I'm thinking about getting like all those dashes and then different um like symbols uh on my fingers air high fives I I'm I definitely wanna see it like I am definitely a fan um I actually every time I get a tattoo um except for my arm I use the same artists for both but for to finish the whole sleeve I'm gonna um get different artists so um I also like supporting artists of color um and it's funny the the gentleman who did my my aunt tattoo his name was Horace like literally on paper was Horace I was like Netter speaking to me I'mma let you do my my aunt tattoos so um he has since moved to Florida and I don't even know where he is now but he was very dope um so any tattoo artist recommendations um so I live in Jersey um I wouldn't mind going into the city for an artist but again I very look for people who are um how can I say this nicely professional I don't want you smoking weed over this open wound that you're doing on my arm I don't want you eating over my arm I don't want to listen to your loud conversations about your baby mom respectfully that's just not the customer that I wish to be just saying so if y'all got any recommendations feel free because I know within the next year I'm at least gonna get something are you saying as in okay so the question is does having all these different amulets on one's body would it block out the frequency of the other meaning like too much may cause less protection so are you speaking about like two ways are you speaking about like how it's saying with the actual physical things on one body I'm like I wanna wait but I also don't wanna wait in silence I'm like hurry up type faster no so I'll I'll wait for oh both it took all that time to write both brother alright I'm done okay I'mma 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 hit you up and ask you about that um oh my gosh so side note I also had laryngitis earlier this week and I'm like I'm starting to feel it but um so I would imagine for okay now for me I don't like color it's just a personal preference I prefer black and gray so I can still see a lot of my skin um so for in my opinion if it came to tattoo um versions of like amulets and and protection and stuff like that um I wouldn't think so now the only reason I would say will possibly it could like have adverse reactions is like policemen so like okay I have Haru and Satash here but they're doing the Sarush Towey so um I have that with Kepper so it's all the same type of protection and and so on and so forth like it's all kinda the same theme so to in my opinion they're working in tandem with each other but if I just got like let me throw I'm trying to think um would I have that would be like not necessarily in opposition but just kinda wouldn't go um I can't even think of it but like the next thing I'm thinking about is getting an Mpu so it's just like I already got Kepper transforming myself moving forward pushing through yada yada I got the Sarush Towey binding myself together um you know kinda instilling my aunt and protecting and then either Mpu or Webwa so opening the way to make sure that all of this is happening so I think if you're careful about it and what you're getting and where you're putting it then I would say no um but if you just getting that and then throwing a butterfly in there and then a little rose and then let me put a rosary on there and then let me I'mma put a gin ya may on there and and then you looking like a um a middle schoolers collage then okay yeah maybe maybe that could mess up your protection and mess up what it is you're trying to do uh because there is such a thing as too much of a good thing so um yeah like that that's the way my thought is of it it's the same thing like when it comes to wearing crystals like there are some crystals like I have literally bought I wanna say at least five hematite rings over the past couple years and I consistently break them I I literally just broke one earlier this week and I thought I was like you know what maybe I just don't need hematite hematite in my life anymore like maybe I am protected enough let like maybe I'm overdoing it so I think that also like when it comes to the actual physical um like bracelets and beads and so on and so forth yeah I was gonna say that too so the it's the same as like oh I love the Netteru so I'mma put all of them on one altar like that's not really a good look so okay for example I have the my aunt candle there I have Sekmet here I don't have any other like Netteru okay I'm not I'm not creepy but I I feel like I kinda need to explain whenever I go to a different country I like to collect dolls from that country like what the heck is that so like this is just a doll this is a figure from when I went to South Africa this is just a wood carving from Ghana like and another crystal so it's you know energetic wise it doesn't interfere but again what was I'm like where is she Sekmet was supposed to be her divine order was to restore my aunt by any means necessary but it was to restore my aunt so to have the both of them in the same place cool beans but if I'm gonna throw her up there I'm like let me just throw some gab I'mma put get up up there and why don't you know just for good measure let me just put best and let me put you know I'mma put Baste no Baste can go with her nevermind I take that back um I'm trying to think I'm like who would be something that's like I'mma put Happy up there like it's just in general like you wanna try to put energy that goes similar together together that would be the equivalent of you know what I'mma I'mma you know fold my laundry but then I'mma put all the clothes in one drawer why would you do that it's the same with with the Netteru like and again this isn't about limiting one's self-expression but respecting divine order like the commit you was all about divine order and and um discipline and you know as things being a certain way like they said magical words your hecka ooh if you don't hit those tones right your whole thing is jacked up so you wanna make sure if you're getting the tattoos or you're wearing crystals and amulets and so on and so forth that they're working together in tandem with each other otherwise you gonna jack yourself up and that's also like you know when people just be like oh I'm a healer oh I do this I do that like what was I I was on some Facebook group and somebody was like hit me up for your I don't remember what it was but it was the equivalent of some type of reading and and people really just be yes sign up absolutely you don't know these people from a can of paint you don't know what they're about you don't know who their ancestors are you don't you don't know what their energy is about you don't like do you have it that's one of the reasons why you know nobody wanna be affiliated with a temple nobody wanna be affiliated with um organization but organization is what keeps us hmm let's say as a society yes we all are individuals and blah 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 all that you know Americana yada yada but um that's how things get done that's how you know I can trust this priest because they in the temple now yes I understand people the first time soon as I say priest they like but they Catholics yeah that's right cuz they was corrupt and letting they priests do what they was doing um so obviously no you shouldn't but it's supposed to be a way that we can stamp and say this is a person who's safe this is a person who can help you and they know they stuff they not just like who oh gosh I it was another group I I was like really on social media today and um somebody was just like it's like um we live in such a microwave society and I'm I'm clearly not using the same words that they use but it's this idea of like you can take a course get certified over the weekend read a book watch a YouTube and now you're trying to set up a shop to make money off this knowledge that you don't really even have this deeper understanding for and now you trying to lead people through so now you bringing more karma on yourself cuz you don't even know what you're doing so again to try to bring it all together um as we try to work with amulets and our sacred word even sit like what um like if you find that you cursing a lot I'm not gonna lie sometimes I have a potty mouth or I just have very colorful and interesting ways of saying things but that doesn't negate the fact that I need to work with Jehudi I need to make sure my words are on point because if not uh you know I I speak life into children every day and even when it's funny because I was fussing at him about grades today I was just like yo I know we have fun together and I love y'all dearly I teach other classes though don't take my class again I was like I wanna see you in a different class so we can learn new stuff and have new conversations not the same thing over so yeah I'm yelling at them I could have told them you're lazy you're this you're that da 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 but no why always you know you want to lead that positive vibration you want them kids to be like okay or people or your spouse or whomever or even yourself like I fussed at my friend the other day talking about something something I'm hideous and I'm like why would you call yourself that like you're listening to yourself so again it is it's our execution like how are we using our tools and are we conscious or are we just kind of I need a quick fix like hurry up give me the crystals hurry up give me the air like like we can't do that we can't we can't we can't we can't so I'm pretty sure I talked over those ten minutes I sure did I talked a whole another twenty-two so um we are on page twenty-six and I'm like let me put my bookmark in cuz Lord knows I don't need to Netter knows that I don't need to lose my page and um just overall so I'm still working on um uploading the eBay store I'm actually working on it's funny because I'm working on creating like amulets and things like that because this is just something I feel like I need so um still working on that um but in the meantime um there's a group over on Facebook uh comedic living in the twenty-first century um this morning I had asked the group the question uh what is your morning ritual so um that is something else I also am trying to do where it's just like let's have more conversations because again I can respect us having intellectualized conversation and and talking about the readings and things like that but what's the use of me reading that book if like I said like I'm reading that but now I'm applying it to me getting tattoos me protecting myself um over the next week and like what can I actually do with like what in my spiritual system helps me feel protected and kinda clears out negativity so from today's story I need to get crocodiles and other animals and put them by my door and put stuff at the different corners so that my home will be better protected like that's what I got out that story today or well one of the stories that was in there so again that's the whole purpose of this so if you wanna have more kinds of conversations about you know just how to do stuff or relationships and how those you know how we as chemites can um heal or have better relationships or build and things like that um beyond just being mad at Christians and white people cuz I know that's a lot of people and I can I get it I understand why people feel that way but that's not exclusive to being a a comedic person so there are plenty of groups to argue I do not wish to argue I just wish to build and you know help each other figure this thing called life out so I will see you all next week Thursday uh six PM Eastern Standard Time and um Amitun Ponateer uh Amitun Ponateer um give yourself to Netra daily keep yourself to Netra daily and may tomorrow be as today so peace and blessings I'll see y'all next week shimmy and hatap